It being 7:30 on Tuesday, January 17, 2023. Let's begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military at home and abroad and for their families? Clerk Samino, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Berica?
Here.
Counselor Flaherty is absent. Counselor Hume?
Here.
Counselor Mackin? He's remote, Counselor Mackin. Counselor Maglio?
Here.
Counselor O'Brien? Present, he is also remote. Counselor Reynolds?
Here.
Counselor Ringus is absent. Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. We do have two councilors who are participating remotely this evening, so all votes will be by roll call. All right, we'll begin with our announcements, and I would like to turn the mic over to Counselor Hume to provide us with an update on the charter review process.
Thank you, Madam President. The Charter Review Committee, as hopefully most of you have heard, has reconvened. We started prior to COVID, and COVID kind of, not kind of, kind of, rather, COVID ended the approach we were taking, which was going to go out to the public. So we basically started over from the beginning with the committee members, myself, Counselor Ringus, the committee for the council, with Chairman Peter Moran. And we've met a few times. Our next three meetings have been scheduled, and these are for the public to come and comment. All our meetings are open to the public, but these next three meetings are specifically to get the public's comment. The next one is this coming Saturday, January 21, at 10:00 a.m., right here at Braintree Town Hall. The next one is Thursday, February 2, at 7:00 p.m. That is a tentative meeting right now, because we were looking to have the planning board attend that meeting. They are not available that evening, because what we're doing is we're bringing in departments to get their input on any updates, changes, or their comments on the charter. The last meeting, we had Jim Casey, our town clerk, come and present on all the elections as far as they relate to the charter. Those are available via B-Cam if you want to see those. He was very informative, had a lot of good updates and potential changes. Nothing's going to take place until the Charter Review completes its review and gets all the input from the public and different various, the various departments. So we will do that, and then it will be just a recommendation from the Charter Review Committee to the mayor's office and council for that. And then the final public meeting for public comment is Saturday, March 4, at 1:00 p.m. So on those particular meetings for the public, there's no set agenda for those dates other than getting the input. If you have something specific you want to talk about, come to those meetings. If you can't attend and want to participate, you can reach out to the town council clerk, Sue Samino, you can reach out to myself, you can reach out to Dave Ringus, or if many of you know Peter Moran, you can reach out to him as well, and any other members of the Charter Review Committee. So just recap, Saturday, January 21, 10:00 a.m., Thursday, February 2, at 7:00 p.m., Saturday, March 4, at 1:00 p.m., all right here, Town Hall for the Charter Review Committee. Public input are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hume, and thank you and Counselor Ringus for soaring on that committee. This is a great opportunity for residents to get involved and have a say in the town's governing documents. So if you can make it, please do. All right, couple other announcements. There has been so much going on at Town Hall in the past week. I just want to recap some of the highlights we've had. So last Thursday was our Citizen of the Year event, and congratulations again to Carrie Doherty, who was named Braintree Citizen of the Year. You may know Carrie as the founder of the Superstar Sports League and the Fancy Formal, serving our special needs community for more than 20 years. So congratulations again to Carrie, and thank you for your service. Sunday was the town's first Lunar New Year celebration. If you were able to make it into Town Hall, wow, it was an awesome turnout. It was absolutely packed, wall-to-wall, incredible array of events and information. So congratulations to the entire team. And I really wanted to make sure I gave a special thanks to our custodial and facility staff, Bruce, Jim, Dave, John. They were on their feet all day, and I think it took them more than an hour to have this whole place tip-top, in tip-top shape after the event ended. It would have been a shock. They were smiling and still being so gracious at the end of a long day, so we're so lucky to have them. And then yesterday, we had a bagged lunch drive here at Town Hall, and thanks to councilors Flaherty and Maglio and Mayor Kokoris and Senator Till Timothy, along with resident volunteers, we were able to bag 150 lunches for Father Bills and Main Spring. So another great community service event yesterday. So lots going on, please be involved and reach out with all of your great ideas. So are there any other announcements from councilors? Counselor Maglio?
Thank you, Council President Berica. So I just want to remind people to Zoom in to the Conservation Committee meeting on Monday night, the 23rd of January, particularly if you're from East Braintree or if your child plays baseball on the East Braintree Little League. There is a pretty significant plan that is going to be presented at that meeting along with the Braintree Parks and Recreation Department, and I think it's very important for everyone who lives in East Braintree to be able to understand what kinds of improvements there will be, what the process will be, as well as what kinds of opportunities there are. And certainly, if there are concerns, this would be the opportunity to hear and to ask questions, hopefully, and to be able to do it from the comfort of your home through a Zoom meeting. So hope to see you online.
Thank you so much, Counselor Maglio. Any other councilors have announcements? Counselor Hume?
I don't have an announcement, but I want to make a comment on the Martin Luther King Peacemaker Award. I was out of town and unfortunately could not attend, but when I heard it was Carrie Doherty, it was, I couldn't think of anybody better. Carrie, if you don't know, Carrie is of the likes of the Nelson Chins and the Paul Machados, who give back to this community, and nobody has any idea to the extent that they give back. Carrie owns two businesses, that she donates food and has started a holiday drive for the elderly, which we always think about the children. We here have always participated in the children's drive, Christmas drive, but Carrie started a few years back giving back to the elderly, who some don't have any families and might not have pajamas or food of their own. Her business has done that. She's been involved in all the sports, as was, as Madam President mentioned, superstars. Carrie is just, has a heart of gold, so involved in this community with the special needs and so many aspects with our kids and adults. And I was disappointed, but I did reach out to Carrie. So if you haven't heard about Carrie, you need to look into her and find out, because she is a gem of Braintree, and we are lucky to have her.
You're here. Thank you, Counselor Hume. Any other announcements? All right, with that, we will move on to our approval of minutes from November 15, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 15, 2022?
Show moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio? Counselor O'Brien? Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus is absent. Counselor Ryan? Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. All right, we have three public hearings this evening. So the process will be that we will vote to open the public hearings, then we will hear from all the parties, including any members of the public that wish to speak, then we will vote to close the public hearings, and then finally, we will vote on the matter at hand. So before we move on, I do want to recognize our department heads who are here with us this evening, Chief of Staff Nicole Taub, Finance Director Ed Spellman, and HR Director Cindy De La Peña. So thank you so much for being with us this evening. With that, we'll move on to our old business, 23001, mayor, authorization of four-year lease agreement for 2015 Washington Street, or take up any action relative thereto. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for Order 23001?
Motion to open the public hearing for Order 23001.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call to open the public hearing.
Councilor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty is absent. Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus is absent. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, I will refer to Counselor Reynolds, chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, for their recommendation on Order 23001.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, the Ways and Means Committee met earlier and voted unanimously for full, for recommended approval of Order 23001.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reynolds. Would anyone from the mayor's office like to speak on this?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. As I think everybody is aware, the town has been engaged in a long-term lease with the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office dating back to 2012 for use of the property located at 2015 Washington Street, which is just past Katz Academy as we're heading through to the Highlands. The property consists of just over 16,000 usable square feet of space, and that's contained within five buildings that exist on the property. In addition to the buildings, the sheriff's office has built a pretty extensive ropes course that is an integral part of the summer leadership camp that they run there every year. Going back to 2012, the property was subject to a lease for an annual rent of $75,000 for the first six years of the lease, and then from 2018 to 2021, the rent increased to As we approached the end of that lease term, we indicated to the sheriff's office through the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, which is the state agency that's responsible for lease of land of this nature, that we would be looking for an increase in the rental value of the property moving forward. In order to allow us time to negotiate those terms, we entered into a one-year short-term tenancy extending at the current terms, and then have reached an agreement for an additional four years for lease of the property for $113,789.30, which is payable in monthly installments and reflects an increase of $36,539.30 over the prior lease term for the property. So that will remain in effect until the end of 2026, at which point, obviously, we'll reevaluate the use of the property and the lease with the sheriff's department. It's a unique piece of land. There are some limitations on what can be done there, and also worthy of consideration is the fact that we're talking about a public partnership that has several significant non-monetary benefits for our community. First and foremost, I think, is that leadership camp that I talked about. Many of our young people are able to avail themselves of that program, and also the jobs that the program provides for residents to serve in the form of camp counselors. We also have the fact that that's a resby zone, and so there are existing restrictions on what can be done there as far as development. And then overall, just the value in maintaining our relationship with the sheriff's office and all of the mutual benefits that come along with that. Additionally, as it relates specifically to the property, they are responsible for maintenance of the site, including the buildings and the areas around the buildings. For any larger-scale projects, they have worked with the town to coordinate mostly through DPW to ensure that it remains in good working order and accessible and safe for all those who enter onto the property. So this is a matter of procedure where we're looking for the council to authorize the mayor to enter into the lease extension to take us through December 31, 2026, at a lease value or rental rate of $113,789.30. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief of Staff Taub. Any members of the council wish to speak on this? Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. I want to thank the Chief of Staff and Mayor Kokoris. This is something I fully support. The sheriff's camp is something that a lot of Braintree children have gone to in the summer. It's something that really, it's a wonderful program. It really fosters team building, and my two boys that are in their 20s now went through it a long time ago. And, you know, having a good relationship with the sheriff's office, I think, is very important. What you may or may not know is I'm the Braintree's representative on the Norfolk County Advisory Board, and it's, we have a very strong relationship with Norfolk County. And we purchased this land, you know, going back about 12 years now, I think you mentioned, and it was something that was in the best interest of the town of Braintree, and, you know, deriving revenue from renting this property is great. We need the money. You know, we used the same property that we built the playground on as well, on Katz Academy. So there's a lot of good things that have come from this transaction and dealing with Norfolk County. So I fully support this, and I want to thank staff for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Any other members of the council? I actually have a question. I think it might be for Director Spellman. So I went and looked at the assessed value of the property, which is about, it's $4.9 million, thereabouts, and it, did the math right. If we were to collect the commercial rate on this property, I believe we would be getting about $105,000 for this coming year. So this, if that's, am I thinking about this right, Director Spellman? In this case, we're actually going to be getting more than if we were collecting property taxes on this property.
I think he's doing the math.
Thank you.
[laughing].
Thank you. Thank you, Director. So I do want to point out, and I, you know, kudos to the mayor's office for negotiating this lease, even though it's over four years, that's an $8,000 gain over what we would be collecting if we were collecting property taxes. It's 113 over $105,000.
Per year, yes.
Yeah, so per year. So to echo Counselor Ryan's sentiments, you know, our partnership with the sheriff's office has really been invaluable, and I think this is a phenomenal deal for the community, both from a financial, dollars-and-cents standpoint, and for those intangible benefits that come with having this property in Braintree. So fully support this, and thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
All right, with that, is there any member of the general public who would wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing for Order 23001?
Show moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call to close the public hearing.
Councilor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty is absent. Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus is absent. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you. And now, is there a motion for Order 23001?
That, motion that the town acting through the mayor be authorized to enter into a four-year lease extension with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts by and through the commissioner of its Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance for use of the property at 2015 Washington Street, Braintree, Mass. 02184, by the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office. Show moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty is absent. Counselor Hume?
Oh, sorry, aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus is absent. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
The motion carries. Congratulations. All right, moving on to 23002, mayor, transfer funds from the Human Resources Salary Reserve, or take up any action relative thereto. This is also a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for 23002?
Show moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call to open the public hearing.
Councilor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus is absent. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much, Clerk Samino. I will now refer to Counselor Reynolds, chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for their recommendation for Order 23002.
Thank you, Madam President. Early this evening, the Ways and Means Committee met to review Order Number 23002 and voted to unanimously recommend approval.
Thank you very much. I will turn it over to the Chief of Staff again.
Madam President, as the council is aware, the town has been in the process of negotiating successor collective bargaining agreements with all of our town unions. The current contracts expired at the end of June 2022. Part of the process includes negotiating a cost-of-living increase for each of the three fiscal years covered by the term of the contract. Our non-union management employees are not subject to a collective bargaining agreement, so historically, as is the practice in many places, the, those salaries track the cost-of-living adjustments afforded to the unions through the course of negotiations. Where we have begun settling contracts, one of those is before you, is 23003 this evening, reflecting a cost-of-living adjustment in year one fiscal '23 of 1%. We are looking to transfer the value of that amount from the HR Salary Reserve that was previously authorized and appropriated during the fiscal '23 budget process. The total amount for that transfer is $31,880.99, and that's coming from the HR Salary Reserve, which is funded at $448,251. So just again, to reiterate, this is not a new appropriation of funds, but previously authorized funds. Did I, I gave you the spiel on the wrong motion? I think that...
That's all right.
This is...
No, can I just get the title of 23002 again, please? It is, pardon me, Transfer of Funds From Human Resources Salary Reserve...
Nope, so that was correct. So the non-union employees are funded out of the HR Salary Reserve. So everything I said is consistent and accurate.
No problem. All right, is there anyone from the council who would like to speak on this? Counselor Ryan?
Are we voting on for the non-union employees now?
Correct.
And how many employees does this affect?
So there was a spreadsheet attached, and I think, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30. Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty. Go right ahead, Counselor, then.
I think it's very appropriate for the non-union employees to be getting the same cost-of-living increase adjustment as union employees. The cost of everything has been going up, and this is not going to match the cost of inflation by any means, but it's something that is well-deserved, and I fully support this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Any other councilors? Counselor Maglio?
I would agree with Counselor Ryan. One comment that I did make, and if I was wondering it, I think maybe others might wonder it as well, is that there's still a significant amount of our staff, who are members of unions, who are still in the process of their union negotiations. But what we talked about was that this 1% is sort of leading the way, and something that across the board will be offered to union and non-union. And as they go through and make their, and build their agreements, this 1% that they will be getting was part of our discussions last May, when we approved the budget for FY '23. So it's not new money, it's also not just non-managed, non-union employees. This will be across the board, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Maglio. Very helpful. Anyone else? I have one question, and this dovetails, I think, off of Counselor Maglio's comments. So this is for year one, as was in our document package, which again, is available online for all residents. All the information the council receives is in the public record and available for viewing. The unions have a three-year contract, a 1% raise, a 2% raise, and a 3% raise over three years. So what is the guarantee for our non-represented and non-union employees that they'll also get that in the coming years?
So the salaries are tracked in what we refer to as a salary scale. Each union has their own unique salary scale, and the non-union employees also have a salary scale. So that will get generated for fiscals '23, '24, and '25, with rates reflecting the 1%, 2%, and 3% increases being negotiated.
And that will be reflected in the upcoming year's budgets?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. What else? Counselor Reynolds?
Clarification. These, this approval does not constitute anything with the actual negotiations between the unions. This is just as Counselor Maglio had stated, based on monies that we had allocated from the budget process last spring.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and a fund transfer. Counselor Ryan?
I think it's, it's good to show the unions that, you know, non-union employees had taken the 1% too in the first year, because that's probably the least attractive of all three years. So it's good to show them we're all in this together.
It's not a zero. Doom and gloom, tough times.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, councilors. Are there any members of the general public who would like to speak on Order 23002? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing for Order 23002?
Show moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call to close the public hearing.
Councilor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty is absent. Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus is absent. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much, Clerk Samino. And now, is there a motion for Order 23002?
Motion that the town vote to amend the wage and salary classification schedules as most recently amended by appropriating the sum of $31,880.99 for the purpose of funding a wage increase for the non-union employees effective July 1, 2022, and for the purpose, the sum of $31,899, $880.99 be transferred from the Human Resources Employee Benefits Program Reserve Line 0115204578050, and further, that the Director of Municipal Finance is authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various accounts affected thereby in such amounts as are proper and required in anticipation of approval of these agreements. Funds were appropriated to the reserve account in the originally approved fiscal year 2023 budget. Show moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty is absent. Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien? Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus is absent. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our third public hearing of the evening, 23003. Mayor, transfer funds from the Water Sewer Reserve Fund or take up any action relative thereto. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for Order 23003?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to open the public hearing.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty is absent. Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much, Clerk Simino. All right, I will turn it over to Counselor Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for that committee's recommendation on Order 23003.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee met early this evening and did vote unanimously to recommend approval for Motion 23003.
Thank you very much. Chief of Staff Taub?
For the last time this evening, this is another transfer of reserve funds that was part of the previously approved 2023 fiscal year budget. These funds go to support the settlement of the collective bargaining agreement with the Utilities Workers Union of America, which is comprised of our water and sewer employees, as well as the employees at the treatment plant. That union is small, but they sure are mighty. I have to say, what an impressive amount of work that they do. Included in the transfer request is that 1% cost of living adjustment that we talked about for fiscal year '23. In addition to that financial benefit, we also negotiated a hazardous materials and conditions stipend, totaling 3% of each individual employee's base pay. As I shared with the committee, I had an opportunity to kind of witness firsthand the work that some of the men and women in this union do, and I have to say, you hear about it, but until you actually see it, it's really difficult to comprehend and recognize the serious and oftentimes dangerous nature of the work that they do. They're not simply inspecting meters or pipes. They are called to go 12 feet or deeper into the ground to look at and work on pipes, often in very narrow spaces, in quite frankly, what I can only describe as fairly gross circumstances and conditions. They were working across the street while we were mid-negotiations and talking about this proposal, and so I asked them to let me know next time they were going to be in the ground, so I could come out and see for myself. And I did, and quite frankly, that was all I needed to hear about justification for these funds for these employees. We also have employees in this union that are called out, often in the middle of the night when there's a water main break, to ensure that there's minimal disruption to our residents with the services provided. And then we have the folks over at the treatment plant, which is a 24/7 operation that I think we often forget about, because they are often unrecognized in the work that they do. And with the evolution of water treatment and distribution, their work has only grown increasingly difficult and often increasingly dangerous as the times have continued. So we felt it was incredibly important to recognize those responsibilities that they've taken on above and beyond their traditional responsibilities, and recognize that through a hazardous conditions and material stipend. The other noteworthy fact for this is, this is an enterprise fund. It does not come out of the operating budget. So the $125,000 set aside in the reserve line is one of those kind of self-sufficient programs that effectively pays for itself. So of the $125,000 budgeted in the reserve, we're looking to transfer $45,997.79 to support 1% off of the fiscal '22 base, and then the additional 3% on top of the new fiscal '23 base.
Thank you very much, Clerk Simino. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Chief of Staff.
Chief of Staff Taub, thank you, Counsel Ryan.
So I fully support this. You know, at one point, I was a selectman before I became a counselor, and I was the manager that would negotiate with the water and sewer employees, and they did have a wonderful union representing them as part of the AFL-CIO. You know, I really think that the workers in the water and sewer department can be, you know, the unsung heroes in the town. You know, you really only think about them if something goes wrong. You don't think about them when you turn your faucet on and water comes out of the faucet, and you don't think about them when you flush your toilet and it goes away. People really don't think where the water comes from or where the wastewater goes to. They just know it goes away. So these are the folks that, you know, we rely on 24/7. I think, you know, we really should appreciate them more. They, they're part of our first responders in the town, and a lot of times, they don't get considered that way, that when something goes wrong, they're the people responding for the public health in our community. And they're always, or quite often, in my opinion, one of the first contracts to settle. And they help, you know, help us, because we have a lot of unions that we have to do collective bargaining with. And I think these folks are well represented, and I think the hazardous pay is very appropriate. I think, you know, you're talking about people that need to do confined space entry into sewer lines, active sewer lines, and stand in wastewater. You're talking about people that have to enter water manholes, that, you know, that's not safe either when you enter a confined space. You need to be trained and certified. You need to do lockout, tagout. You need to be licensed employees at the water treatment plant. You need to have a water treatment plant license. So in this day and age, it's just getting harder and harder to get well-qualified people in these jobs. You know, maybe 10 years ago, you'd post a job working in the water and sewer department, and you'd have 50 people apply for it. Now, if you post a job, you're lucky if you get two people to apply for it. And if the person you hire is in the job for a week, you're lucky that they stay, because they realize they're doing work, and they're not telecommuting. They're working in the manhole. So these are, it's very appropriate, and I fully support, and I want to see a job well done to all the water and sewer workers in the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Counsel Maglio?
Question that I forgot to ask upstairs. Just in terms of how we do things, or how it's done in the town, that's a stipend, so it doesn't increase their base pay? It's just a stipend representing 3%?
That's correct. So there, so looking forward to, say, fiscal '24, the 2% will be off of just their base, and then the 3% will come off the base. It doesn't actually change the base.
And is the 3%, is the hazardous stipend something that they'll get every year?
It's currently negotiated for the next three years, and in my experience, once you give it, it is very difficult to take it away.
And it'll stay at 3, or is there an increase in that as well?
They can certainly attempt to negotiate an increase, but right now, we're at a flat 3 for the next three years.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Maglio. Any one else? Okay. I have one question, and I, I don't think we could have said it any, I couldn't have said it any more eloquently than Counselor Ryan in appreciation. I work for a utility in my day job, and it is exceptionally dangerous work. And we are incredibly lucky to have our own water treatment facility and our own electric utility here in Braintree, and those, those folks are hard to come by, and so grateful for all the work they do in town. Are there any remaining contracts to be negotiated that would be, require funding out of the Water and Sewer Reserve Fund?
I, I think what you may see, so for example, there are some non-union employees whose salaries are partially funded out of the enterprise fund. So what you may see down the road when we're doing some of the larger-scale transfers is transfers from the Water and Sewer Enterprise back into the Salary Reserve to kind of make up for any of those salaries that are being covered now. There's a few enterprise funds that are going to be triggered in that way. Gulf is another one. There's a few Gulf employees on the non-union list. And I, I think you'll see potentially some of the AFSMI, and potentially a small handful of BPMA Teamsters that are going to come out of this fund.
Okay, because this con, or this amount is about 50% of the reserve, a little bit less, I think, if I'm remembering right?
So unique to this one is that hazardous materials, which is very specific to this group of employees, and isn't necessarily something you're going to see for others. So what we would be looking for most likely is the 1%.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're comfortable that there is going to be enough money left over for the remaining salary requirements that we owe our people.
Yes, I don't anticipate that being an issue.
Okay. Thank you. That is all I had. Okay. Is there any member of the general public who would wish to speak on Order 23003? Okay, seeing none. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing for Order 23003?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty is absent. Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much, Clerk Simino. Could I get a motion for Order 23003?
Motion that the town vote to amend the wage and salary classification schedules as most recently amended by appropriating the sum of $45,997.79 for the purpose of funding a wage increase and other items as detailed in the Memorandum of Agreement, MOA, for the Utility Workers Union of America, AFL-CIO Local Number 466UWA, effective July 1st, 2022, and for this purpose, the sum of $45,997.79 be transferred from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, Water Administration Program 01, Reserve Line 7043801578050, and further, that the Director of Municipal Finance is authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various accounts affected thereby in such amounts as are proper and required in anticipation of approval of these agreements. Funds were appropriated to the reserve account in the originally approved fiscal year 2023 budget. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty is absent. Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien? I apologize. Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
The motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, we have no new business this evening. So with that, is there a motion to refer to the Committee of Ways and Means, Order 23005? Mayor, acceptance of donations or take up any action relative thereto?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote for referral.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty is absent. Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. That is our final agenda item for this evening. The next meeting for the council will be on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, at 7:30 PM. Thank you, as always, to the crew from B-CAM, who brings the town council meeting straight to your living room, or phone, or tablet, through YouTube, or on cable. So thank you so much to Bill Needham, Jerry Komic, and Wes Ray, and the entire team at B-CAM. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call to adjourn.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty is absent. Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is absent. Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.